Seven o'clock, so we'll call this meeting to order. I will start with the land acknowledgement. The city of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederated Villages of LaShawn. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloneye Tribe. We thank them for their contributions, which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The city of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home. And with that, we can move on to roll call.
Commissioner Moaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Here.
Commissioner Pilch?
Present.
Commissioner Wadi, she'll be arriving late, and I will note the time of her attendance when she arrives, and Chair McLeod.
Here. All right, we'll move on to item number two on our agenda, ex parte communications. Have there been any being done? I had none. We'll move on to item three, announcements. Any announcements?
Yes, and you will notice I put this towards the front of the agenda this evening. I would like to announce our new community development director, Dina Tassini. So, Dina, if you want to come up and introduce yourself, that would be great.
Hey, thank you.
Hello, good evening. I figured I was off-camera over there, so I should at least show my face. My name is Dina Tassini. I'm the director of community development, or community development director. I think I've been here seven weeks now, and I'm loving it. This is a wonderful place. I have been to the housing, to city council, and now here, so I hope you'll see my face more and that we get to have a good relationship. And if you need anything at any time, please reach out. We have great staff that, you know, usually you don't have to reach out to me, but if you would like to, and I'd love to meet each one of you individually, understand what you may or may not wish for us to do. So with that, I'm going to sit and listen for the meeting tonight and hope to see you again in a few weeks.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and welcome to Albany. Welcome to the position.
Thanks for coming.
All right, we'll move on to item four, consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion unless an item is pulled from the consent calendar. And we did have a couple of modifications to make to item four dash two and four dash three.
Yes, so thanks to Chair McLeod for noting the miswording in condition number nine. Staff recommends whether these stay on the consent calendar or not, that the replacement language for condition number nine is that the building permit plan said shall show the removal of the curb cut with restoration of the curb gutter, paving, planting, strip, and sidewalk, and the removal and landscaping of the driveway. So there was some miswording, so if any recommendation could include that swap out for that language, that would be appreciated.
Okay. Yeah, it caught my eye, and it seemed like it needed to be clarified a little bit. I mean, the only thing I would add would be per Public Works standards and specifications or something like that, but that's probably going to be taken care of at the building permit stage, I would imagine. Okay, well, is there anyone in the public who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Please either step up to the podium or use the raise the hand icon.
Hi there. My name's Carl Cruth. I'm here about 9:02 Carmel. Just grateful for your consideration, and we have no problem with the curb cut and the landscaping. Thank you.
Okay, you the applicant?
Yes.
Yes, okay, okay.
My bad, I don't do this kind of thing.
Okay, well, just who you are representing. Okay, so that doesn't pull that item from the consent calendars, brief comment. Does any commissioner wish to pull any item from the consent calendar? Being none.
If I may add one thing, we did get a public communication for the 9:02 Carmel, and one of the requests was just to state the maximum permissible density for the site. So I just thought if it's okay, I could just announce what the maximum permissible density for that site would be. Commissioner Pilch, do you have a?
Yeah, actually, I did have one question about four-two. I don't know if we're officially pulling it or not.
If it's clarifying questions and statements, it could be we can ask without pulling it, but if it's controversial, we should have it pulled.
May I go ahead? For, so the, we're extending the existing non-conforming setbacks. I just want to clarify that the exterior walls are not being changed or moving at all, but since there's unhabitable space that's being turned into habitable space, we have to technically call out the existing non-conforming setbacks. Is that, do I, am I reading that correctly?
That is correct. The excavation work requires extending vertically an existing non-conforming.
Oh, in this case, it would be actually extending down.
Exactly.
Yeah, oh, gotcha. All right.
Plus what you already said as well.
And that, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Oh, good.
If I may note that Commissioner Wadi has entered at 7:06. Thank you for joining. And Commissioner Wadi, since you missed the announcement, we did introduce Dina Tassini, our new community development director, so she kindly offered, if you wanted to reach out with her to meet up, that would be great. But if I may continue, the maximum residential density for the Solano Commercial District is 63 dwelling units per acre. So on a lot the size of 9:02 Carmel, which is 3,300, that would allow for a total of 4.7, which would round down unless they were doing a density bonus project, and then it would round up to five. So it's either four without density bonus or five if it were a density bonus project.
Apology, apologies for interrupting you earlier.
Commissioner Wadi, we're just on the consent calendar, and there's one addition to the language for conditions of approval for four dash two and four-three, minor addition. And we are at the point where no one has pulled any items, and we are ready to take a motion.
Before we do, if Commissioner Wadi is going to be voting, can we hear if you have any ex parte communications?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
I will move the consent calendar.
With the addition of?
With the addition of the item shown on the screen. The addition of the change noted on the screen.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
And vote, Commissioner Moaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Pilch?
Yes.
Wadi?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. That motion carries five to zero. Your project has been approved. There's still a 14-day appeal period. I don't know if their story polls up, but they should remain up for the duration of the appeal period. If there are story polls, I don't know. If there are, there are none, okay. Yeah, your project has been approved. All right, moving on to item five, public comments. For persons desiring to address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda, please note that city policy limits each speaker to three minutes, and the Brown Act limits the commission's ability to take and/or discuss items that are not on the agenda. Therefore, such items may be referred to staff for comment or to a future agenda. Is there anyone online who would like to make a public comment? There's no one else in the room for that.
Please use the raise the hand icon if you'd like to speak on something not on the agenda.
Ask them. Hi, we're in the public comment item. If you wish to make any public comments for the good of the city or on any general matter, you're welcome to do so, or not. Okay, fair enough. Welcome. Okay, all right, so any public comment online?
No.
No, okay, we'll close item five and move on to item six, dash one, public hearing on Planning and Zoning Commission Resolution 2025 dash four, recommending that the city council adopt amendments to the Planning and Zoning Code regarding residential uses and care facilities. And staff will have a presentation for us.
There's a little bit of lag. Okay, there we go. I cannot see my presenter view. There we go. Okay, perfect. Okay, so, good evening, commissioners and members of the public and staff, fellow staff members. My name is Mira Han, Associate Planner with the City Planning and Building Manager Leslie Mendez, and I are here tonight to present some amendments to our Planning and Zoning Code in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review and recommendation. These amendments are to implement housing element programs and reflect changes to state law related to residential uses and community care facilities. So the proposed amendments seek to implement, as I said, housing element programs and state law updates. As you may already know, on February of 2023, the Albany City Council adopted a 2023, 2031 Housing Element, which provides a policy framework and implementation plan to address existing and projected housing needs here in Albany over an eight-year planning period, including special housing needs. The proposed zoning ordinance amendments seek to implement discrete and readily achievable programs adopted as part of the housing element. They also seek to align with updates to state law related to family daycare homes and accessory dwelling units legislation. So we'll go over these in more detail on the next slides. So Program 1A, like you can see here, is the single-family zoning reform. It is included under the Housing Element goal of equitable access to housing, which is to revise the single-family zoning, or R1 in our code, to allow for a greater mix of housing types and increased access to affordable housing opportunities in Albany's residential neighborhoods. So one means, one means of increasing affordability, as we all know, is through the availability of more infill homes located in multi-unit buildings. So a relatively recent piece of state legislation, which you may be aware of already, but I will explain it here for the public, that was enacted recently to incentivize housing, is Senate Bill 9, or SB 9, which permits the construction of duplexes on lots zoned single-family, or R1 district in our city. However, the city zoning code only allows single-family homes and ADUs in the R1 district. So in conformance with SB 9 and the intent of Program 1A, the proposed amendments would, one, eliminate language designated, designating the R1 district for the exclusive construction of single-family homes and ADUs. So what it does is that this opens the possibility to construct different types of dwelling units that would fill in the need for missing middle housing types, and not only single-family homes and ADUs, which of course would still have to meet development standard allowances and regulations in our code. So also, staff looked in the residential use classifications, as you can see on the lower right bottom, the lower right part of the slide. So we looked in the, in these classifications in the use table and found that the code currently lists single, two, and multifamily uses as residential uses. So those concepts are listed as uses. However, rather than uses, these are structures. So because these are housing configuration types rather than uses, staff proposes to group them all as structured types under a new single-use classification for dwelling. So dwelling would be defined as a residential use of a single building or portion of a building that provides permanent provisions for occupancy by a household, a broad use classification that includes single, two, multifamily, and mixed-use development types. So by doing this, dwelling provides the flexibility to allow a variety of housing types within a district, particularly the R1 district, while still retaining the underlying density allowances and development standards for that district, as explained before. Let's see, next slide. All right, so let's go over Housing Element Program 3D. This is included in a different goal, which is Goal Three of the Housing Element, Special Housing Needs. So Program 3D provides directives to lower regulatory barriers for large residential care facilities and to recognize group homes as a use allowed in all residential zones. So what are these two types of uses? Let's just go briefly over each one of them. So first, we should talk about definitions, right? The state defines a residential care facility, which is the first kind of section of this amendment group. State, sorry, as a dwelling unit licensed by the state of California to provide 24-hour non-medical care for persons in need of personal services, supervision protection, and assistance essential for sustaining the activities of daily living. So that's a residential care facility. So they make, state makes a distinction between small and large residential care facilities. So basically, small residential serves up to six residents, where large, residential large care facility serves more than six residents. So currently, the code, our code, requires a major use permit, which, as you know, requires Planning and Zoning Commission level approval for a large care facility in all residentially zoned districts. The proposed amendments lower the discretion level from a major use permit to a minor use permit, which would only require staff review approval. And similarly, the city's code currently includes spacing and locational requirements for certain care facilities. So for example, it requires a care facility to be located a minimum of 300 feet from another care facility, also that no residential property may be abutted on more than one side by any combination of a large daycare home, daycare facility, or care facility, or residential care facility. So to further this program implementation, the amendments remove all these space requirements unless they're required by state law. And as we know, state law keeps being revised, so that's at the discretion of state law, but in terms of our code, we are removing all space requirements. All right, so moving on to Housing Element Program 3H. This is the last of the three programs that these amendments seek to implement. So what, this one is also part of that special housing needs, housing element goal, and includes changes to our code related to low-barrier navigation centers. I'll explain what those are, or LBNCs, single-room occupancy housing, SROs, and employee housing. So the following amendments are proposed to implement this program. So it's easier to kind of like explain what these amendments are, because they're kind of like, in their definition is included the directive that this program provides. So first of all is to add a definition for low-barrier navigation center, to mirror the statutory definition. And what that is, is a housing-first, low-barrier, temporary service-enriched shelter focused on helping homeless individuals and families to quickly obtain permanent housing. Low barrier, what does it mean? It includes practices to reduce barriers to entry, such as allowing partners, even if they're not a population-specific site, pets, storage of personal items, et cetera. So it's easy to enter these type of facilities. And right now, our code doesn't have a definition for these type of uses. Also, state law, AB 101, requires LBNCs to be a by-right use in any area zoned for mixed use or in a non-residential district that permits multifamily housing. So for example, the Solano Commercial and the San Pablo Commercial District. So to comply with state law and implement the program, LBNCs are defined now and added as a public and quasi-public use and included as a permitted use in both the SPC, or San Pablo Commercial, and SC, Solano Commercial Districts. Consistent with the program recommendation, the amendments change SROs, or single-room occupancy housing, from requiring a use permit to just being allowed by right in the San Pablo Commercial District. The program also suggests to consider adding them as a by-right use in the Solano Commercial District as well, and these two changes are part of the amendments. Also, SROs are to be considered a residential use. So they have been moved to the residential section in the use table as well. Finally, Housing Element Program 3H also includes recognizing employee housing as a residential use. So however, with the proposed extensive and expansive definition of household, employee housing would by definition be a household and be considered a residential use. So creating separate regulations or definitions specific to employee housing was deemed unnecessary. Okay, so moving on to state law updates, we have two sets of state legislation that these amendments seek to align the code with. So first of all is SB 234, which is, it's also called the Keeping the Kids Close to Home Act, right, the family daycare homes, which was passed in 2019 to address the supply shortage for childcare facilities by requiring that local jurisdictions lower regulatory, zoning, and procedural barriers for family daycare homes and treat them as residential uses. So to comply with this law, the amendments are to remove the requirement for a minor use permit for large family daycare homes and allowing them by right in all districts that permit dwelling units, including the San Pablo Commercial and Solano Commercial Districts. As the state has removed discretion for all family daycare, the amendments will include removing any reference that differentiates small family to, from large family daycare and just simplifying the use to family daycare home. And also, the amendments remove all spacing, parking, noticing, and hearing requirements specifically applicable to family daycare homes. So all these have been eliminated from the code in these amendments to comply with this state law. Okay, and then finally, you know, we know that the city, some of us may know that the city last updated the ADU zoning code regulations in winter of 2023 and 2024. Since then, there have been annual legislative changes and updates to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, ADO guidelines. And then, so to comply with these recent changes to state law, the following amendments are proposed. We'll list them here. So one is that the number of detached ADUs permissible on a lot with an existing multifamily dwelling has increased from two to eight. So these are detached ADUs, provided that the number of these ADUs does not exceed the number of existing units on the lot. Second, we have to update reference government code sections for state ADU law, as SB 477 has recharted them. And also, per state law, the ADU amnesty date for unpermitted ADUs has been extended by two years to January 1, 2020. Finally, so while staff was working on all these, we identified opportunities to make some cleanup amendments, which include updating definitions to be consistent with state-defined terms. Also, we removed duplicates, you know, just a general cleanup in terms of definitions for more clarity or in our organization. We also are proposing to update footnotes to the permitted land use table to accommodate amended use classifications, corrected as well to include the prohibition of commercial uses on residential lots on Adams and King Street, which is part of our general plan, as noted on the staff report, and other changes. And finally, some other cleanup amendments to correct footnotes on the ADU ordinance to kind of align the ordinance better with state law. All right, so with that, let me just, okay, all right, so finally, yes, these proposed amendments are in alignment with city policies and goals, as elaborated on pages five and six of the staff report. So they comply with general plan housing and land use elements, and also with the city council strategic plan initiative to promote housing. All right, so staff has received one public comment so far. The comment came from an Albany resident with comments about the modifications to the R1 zoning and how they would ensure that fourplexes can be built in that zoning district. Removing the language, that, so our answer is, you know, as explained before, as we're removing language from the code that would restrict this district or single-family residential district to single-family dwelling units, opens the possibility to build different types of dwelling units, not only single-family, but also duplexes and multifamily with alignment with SB 9, with Senate Bill 9, as explained previously. Also, the commenter asked about the definition of dwelling. Again, as stated previously, the reason to create it is that currently on our use table, what is listed are types of structures. Dwelling is a type of use defined in broad terms now in our proposed amendment to include all types of dwelling units, from single to multifamily to mixed use. So again, a residential use of a single building or portion of a building, that's the definition, that provides permanent provisions for occupancy by a household, which is also a broad use classification to include, again, single, two, multifamily, and mixed-use development. So by doing this, so these changes just provide more flexibility to allow a variety of housing types within a district while still retaining the density allowances and development standards for that district. Also, as a reminder to members of the public and also to the commissioners, these are the ones, the amendments that we're presenting today are cleanup amendments to comply with specific state law updates and housing element programs. But, and staff appreciates the comment received and shares that we will be looking into making more intense updates to our zoning code. more intense updates to our zoning code as well. And I think part of the last comment, part of the comment was in terms of the residential care facilities and its impact on existing facilities. So just as a reminder, these amendments do not apply to senior care facilities, just to residential care facilities as explained throughout the presentation. So yeah, hopefully, this is a good explanation and kind of overview of our presentation. And on recommendations and next steps, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve Resolution 202504 recommending that the City Council adopt the proposed amendments to the Planning and Zoning Code. Upon recommendation of the updated ordinances to the City Council, staff will incorporate any comments received tonight and schedule before the City Council for review and adoption in what we estimate to be October or November of this year. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. We will move to Commissioner questions for staff. Does anyone have questions? Commissioner Wadi?
Yeah, I had a quick question, just making sure I'm understanding this. So the way I'm reviewing the revisions, this effectively makes R1 through 3 as it relates to residential uses the same, right? So there's no longer differentiation between R1, R2, and R3 in terms of density allowed. Is that accurate?
No, we're not changing then density allowances or the maximum or minimums. What we're doing is, it's mostly like semantics, really. It's, we're creating a new use, which is dwelling, an umbrella use, and under it, we would be, we are including, so hey, dwelling, the dwelling use can have different types of structures. However, these are going to be ultimately regulated by our development standards, which include densities, height, you know, FAR, et cetera. Those are not being changed. So ultimately, all the possibilities of development are still being regulated by these development standards.
Got it. So density in the R1, 2, and 3 is enumerated, I'm just looking on the table right now, the use table. So the use table, basically, there's no difference between the R1 and R3, but then you layer in elsewhere, that I probably just don't know where in the code to look for that, but there's somewhere else where it enumerates different densities that are allowed?
Correct. That is correct.
Okay. And then my second question, this might just, maybe it's correlated to that, and I'm just not reading the code right here. But it looks like because dwelling includes up to mixed-use buildings, does that mean that a mixed-use building that includes commercial is permitted in the R1 district? Like, if you hypothetically built like one residential unit, right, something that was at the allowable density in the R1, would you now be allowed to do a mixed-use building of whatever that density allowance is plus a commercial use since subsection D of dwelling definition now allows for a mixed use?
So that's a good question, but no. What we, we define dwelling as the use, which is the residential use, and that dwellings could be located in structures such as a single-family detached, a duplex, multifamily, or a mixed use. So if a mixed use is permissible, it's only if a commercial use is allowable in that district.
Got it. So you go to R1, R1 doesn't allow commercial, therefore inherently a mixed-use building is not allowed?
Correct.
Okay, okay, got it. Thank you. That clarifies my questions.
Any other questions? Yeah, speak into the microphone, please.
I have a question regarding one of the footnotes. Number... Number six, that doesn't allow single-family dwellings in R4 district. This is in Exhibit B.
So Commissioner Roman, sorry, you're referring to footnote number six?
Right, yeah.
Multifamily dwellings only?
Yeah, and that prohibits single-family and two-family dwellings in R4 district, but it doesn't apply that to Solano Commercial and Solano, San Pablo Commercial District. So wondering, are we permitting single-family and two-family dwellings in San Pablo Commercial and Solano Commercial Districts?
So that footnote number six is related to the R4 because previously in the R4, single-family and two-family dwellings were not permitted. So the scope of these, these current amendments are pretty specific related to the program element in the R1 district. So we did not change anything in the R3, R4, RHD. So if single-family were previously prohibited, we still prohibited it? Dwelling units are allowed, but...
It is mentioned somewhere because this would be kind of a summary of uses, you know?
Right.
It would be referring to this, and there is a possibility of misinterpretation that they may think single-family or, you know, two-families are permitted in San Pablo Commercial and Solano Commercial.
So in the Solano Commercial, single-family are permitted?
They are permitted.
Right, in the R4, they're not. In San Pablo, they are not?
I think they are not, yeah.
Yes. So, so we didn't change that, hence the footnote, clarifying.
Okay, but, you know, my question is the footnote because it is just under R4 and it is not under SPC. You know, I'm wondering, like, do we, should we add that there?
So under the Solano, we have footnote eight, and for the San Pablo, we have footnote nine, because each of those footnotes are different and then are tailored specifically to the footnote. So footnote eight for Solano Commercial is the exact, it's just renumbered, it used to be footnote two, there's no difference. Footnote six with the R4 clarifies that the single-family and two-family are not permissible in the R4. And then under San Pablo Commercial, it is the footnote nine, which used to be footnote three. So again, that didn't change, just the numeration changed.
I see, okay. So you have one footnote individually for each district?
Correct. And the only new one is for the R4, San Pablo and the...
I see.
And Solano already had those footnotes.
Okay, yeah. Makes it clear. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Or Pilch?
If you refer to the residential land use classifications, single-family, two-family, multifamily are included within the definition of dwelling. So dwell, right, and what the new footnotes, right, so they are actually being deleted. No, single-room occupancy residential hotel is being moved from quasi-public and quasi-public, quasi-public to residential. Yeah, because now it is considered a residential use. Right. Sure.
Can you help me? Complex on an existing lot, or it allows for dividing a lot and getting four units, or, sorry, not a duplex, but two units. This is in state terms. I'll use the term unit. Allows for two units on a, an existing lot, or if you, it allows you to divide your lot and then potentially have four.
Yes, so basically, none of those development standards may apply if they preclude the construction of a dwelling unit of at least 800 square feet, two dwelling units, sorry, per resulting lot.
Okay. So does that mean... Want to do nine, go to under the lot, they might be able to exceed R4? Yeah, yeah. Is... And it is part of this, single-family zone form applies. Normally, other jurisdictions have farther, we are... We're not doing... So, very... I guess I'm not sure, maybe this is a question, I'm sorry, I don't have my mic on. And maybe this is part of the discussion. I don't know if this is fulfilling the intent of single-family zoning reform or just the letter. And I don't know if you want to speak to that now, or maybe we should hold it off to the discussion.
I didn't really hear a question.
Yes, maybe there isn't one, so maybe we will leave that for discussion. Let me see if I have any more questions. Okay, well then, regarding that, were, did we, as part of this, did we consider what other jurisdictions have been doing with their single-family zoning reform, such as in Berkeley, which just did missing, which did, I think they call them middle housing ordinance just recently?
So, because you asked it like that, we did not look at other jurisdictions. The point of these amendments were not to be exclusive or fully comprehensive. It started out as, it started out as family daycare and grew from there, but it was still limited to be seen as cleanup amendments. So in no way should this be seen as the end, but it's just a start that we thought we could work into our workload.
Got you. Okay, I think that answers the questions. Thank you very much.
Can I ask?
Pearson, yeah?
Yeah, could I ask one clarification? So just based on Commissioner Pilch's comment, so can you confirm that in the R1, SB9 would still be, a resident would still be able to apply SB9 in the R1 on a lot that had one home?
Sorry, can you repeat the question into the mic?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, in our, in the R1 district, would a homeowner be able to utilize SB9?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I think adding to Leslie's comment as well, this amendment, in terms of eliminating language for the R1 district, or the exclusive use of single-family dwelling units, it's to align with the spirit of SB9 as well. So we're moving towards that direction, however, as Leslie explained and I mentioned during my presentation, we will move forward more intensive zoning amendments in the future, near future.
Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Roman.
So just based on Commissioner Pilch and Commissioner Pearson's question regarding SB9, if someone uses SB9 on their R1, R1 lot, single-family lot, let's say you create two units, would they still be permitted to create additional ADUs?
The answer is yes, however, the ADU would be counted as one of the two units.
So there would not be like eight units, if, let's say, you know, there is a large single-family lot, they split that and build four units, and then they add, you know, like two ADUs each, so there would be like six dwelling units on that lot, or maybe eight. Would that be possible?
My understanding is that no. It's, it's, again, an ADU would be considered, would be counted towards, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, I did, one more, I forgot. The classically, the new term dwelling that you're using, is that a classification used in other jurisdictions as well? Or is this something unique to Albany?
I can answer for myself in terms of my professional experience. I have not specifically seen the term dwelling used in a use category. However, in our internal discussions, we considered that since, in the spirit of defining based on the use, what's the use, just to be kind of aligned with that, we, you know, staff thought that the term dwelling would encompass what the actual use would be.
Yeah, I...
And I can confirm other jurisdictions use the term dwelling in their use.
Okay, great. I didn't want to use a term that was maybe only unique to us. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay, anyone else? I don't have a lot to ask, but I guess it's been a little while since SB9 passed, and I'm not really familiar with specifics. Are there minimum lot sizes for SB9? Or, I mean, we have so many small lots that I thought that maybe SB9 almost didn't, you know, it didn't apply, or it wasn't able to be utilized in a lot of small lots, so wanted to...
So it's true, we do have small lots here in Albany comparatively. However, as my understanding, and it's all, we have developed a slew of handouts and frequently asked questions and site eligibility requirements.
So SB9 requires that the minimum lot size is 2,400 square feet, and if you subdivide each lot, it has to be a minimum of 1,200 square feet. So even our small Albany lots qualify for SB9.
Okay. And has any applicant, anybody, used SB9 in any application to date?
No, not in our city.
We have received questions. However, for some reason, who knows, so far, we haven't seen an actual application come in.
Okay. And then you mentioned that we are going to be addressing other zoning issues related to the housing element, our strategic plan, goals, et cetera. So do we have a timeline for that? And what, you know, I think, what I'm looking for is something that's really going to move the needle, you know? I mean, I need this for discussion a little bit, but, you know, in terms of development standards, one related question, it says here at the bottom, CEQA is not triggered by what we're doing today because it's minor. So if we start changing development standards, densities, do we have to go through CEQA approval? Or is there some way to get around that if we're upzoning?
It depends what we are doing. So it'd be analyzed on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how complicated it is to change or, you know, raise our zoning.
Isn't there also a recent state bill that just passed that said if you're implementing your housing element, they're statutorily exempt or exempt, right? So I think there's no longer that, the need to go through CEQA for doing code updates.
Sort of what I was hoping or looking for. Okay, otherwise, I have no question, no more further questions. So if there's anyone, we'll open this up to public comment. If anyone in the room would like to make a public comment on this issue, please come to the dais.
My name is Max Klein. I'm the owner of 1129 Portland Avenue in Albany. It's, first of all, I want to say that I completely approve this plan, and I like the direction it's going. direction it's going in because I'm a fan of increasing housing stock and I really want to address that. Currently, my building, I've just been through planning only a few months ago. I wish I kind of knew about SB9 then, but, you know, there's some problems. So my building was, is on a 2,500-square-foot lot. It's one of those tiny ones in Albany. It has a maximum floor area ratio of 0.55, you know that? That means if you multiply those numbers, you get like 1,300 square foot, which is not that much comparatively to my neighbors. Also, it's a little bit frustrating to me because the lot adjacent to mine is R2, even though I'm in R1. So I'm like, you know, I'm inches away from R2 and I couldn't really build the house that I wanted to, for my family, you saw my other children here as well. So although I like, really like this law, I would really like to eventually see density increase so that, because FAR doesn't make sense for 2,500-square-foot lots, I use the ADU law to add a second unit to there. I think eventually it's like 1,700 square foot if you add these two things together. Pretty happy with that, but the truth is, I would have loved to build more. I spent a lot, you know, getting up to two stories and that, so I really like this and I want to voice my support for increasing densities in R1 as well, so. And one's last comment as well is that, because there's something interesting happened. My backyard is only 300 square foot. The ADU law allows for a 1,000 square foot ADU law, ADU by right. It couldn't even fit in two stories in the backyard. So I was given permission to build an ADU into the front yard with no front setback. So currently, we have about three-foot front setback. So I also, as well as the density and FAR, I would encourage reducing the front setback as another way to accommodate density. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to comment in the room here? Is there anyone online who would like to comment on this item?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Brian Martin. I'm a resident of the 600 block of Adam Street. I thank staff for addressing some of the questions I emailed earlier about this item. Before I begin, I wanted to just mention that about 90% of Commissioner Pilch's statements were not audible. So if he or staff for the official record can summarize what his questions were, that, I think that would be useful. And then one question I had was, in which document is dwelling defined and how is it defined? I looked through all the attachments and I only see it defined in the staff report, which is not a binding document for development in the city. It could be I overlooked it, couldn't, but if staff could clarify that, also from the questions that were answered after the presentation, it was clear that some of the commissioners weren't sure how it was defined or if it was a standard term. And so I think that would, that's important to make sure that that's in there for the public to be aware of what it means. And my last question is, what is the process and timeline by which the underlying restrictions on development in R1 and other zoning districts will be addressed in planning and zoning meetings, which could address the need for higher-density housing, for example, up through fourplexes throughout the city in R1 and would also help the, the poor person who just spoke and wished he could have made a denser development to help out our housing stock and his own family, but was unable to with the current restrictions apparently. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else online?
Please use the raise the hand icon if you'd like to speak. Nope.
No, all right. Seeing no further public comment, public comment is closed and we will move to Commissioner Discussion of this item. Anyone who would like to?
May we answer the questions?
Oh, certainly. Right, dwelling, I, I believe it was in, there was a definitions attachment, wasn't there? Was it in that?
Yes, so it's in Exhibit D and it's under residential use classifications. So yeah, it was uploaded to the agenda and of course, you're welcome to email us as well, the Planning Department, with questions, if you have any further questions about where to find the specific sections of our amendments or the different parts.
Pardon, you, you said Exhibit E as in Echo or did I?
D as in David.
E as in David, okay, thank you.
Yeah. And I don't know if I may chair and Leslie answer the other question about like the list of questions that were asked after that he, he did not find audible. We can just...
Commissioner Pilch had his microphone off for part of his question period. I don't know how we summarize that, but... Were they, would they be able to be, were they captured on the recording at all, even faintly, or I could repeat them if you wanted?
If you can just briefly repeat your questions, that would be helpful.
Okay, let me see. I didn't, I wasn't reading off a script, but let me see if I can remember them correctly and maybe others can fill in. One was about SB9. What do you do? Can people override FAR and density if they need to with SB9? And the answer is yes. Does this implement the intent of single-family zoning reform? The answer was, this is a start. Is dwelling classification used in other jurisdictions? Yes. Do we look at what other jurisdictions are doing? No, not yet. And then I was asking about the table, where, where all the items, where a row is completely struck out, then that row will disappear in the table. And I believe that's all the questions I asked. Okay, thanks. And I think there was a question by Mr. Martin about timeline for future zoning changes.
Right, so timeline isn't really under this agenda, but since it's been brought up, I will just address, we are going to be looking at our future workload and our priority is the items highlighted by HCD on our certification letter. So those are the items that we are going to be, that we're actively working on and moving forward with. So we will be regrouping. We've got, we had a, quite a few kind of summer amendments that we got through, so we need to start focusing. We'll bring kind of an agenda workload for you next meeting and I don't have specific timeframes at this time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Discussion. Everybody have comments?
Happy to start?
Yes, please.
Pretty much I don't, I don't have any additional comments to share. This seems, after answering my questions, it's pretty straightforward. This is effectively a cleanup and alignment with some state laws. This isn't, you know, a massive change of our density controls in the city. So it seems very straightforward and sort of the first step on that journey of cleaning things up and aligning with state law in compliance with our housing element. So this seems like a pretty straightforward action. I'm happy to support. I know others might want to speak, but I'm happy to make a motion to approve when the time comes.
Okay, any other comments? Yeah, I'll, thank you. I'll just echo those comments and just add one more thing, which is that I hope that we do get to density, density and FAR changes sooner than later, maybe even get rid of FAR, I can always hope. But one thing we might want to consider is that Berkeley just did big amendments and went through a very long process. And it might be appropriate for Albany, it might be something to do to just copy and paste. We might just want to consider doing exactly what they did. I don't know if that'll fly in Albany. I'm getting, already getting some looks from fellow commissioners, but, I mean, there's something to be said for not reinventing the wheel, so I'll just leave it at that. Okay. Pearson, or, no, no comments? Mr. Moen?
I would just like to acknowledge that all this updates and amendments, planning staff has done a very thorough job, you know, you have tracked all changes through all sections and all that. It was very clear when I read it. So thank you for that and I support all the proposed amendments.
Okay, leaves me. Yeah, I support what you're doing. It's a great first step. I mean, we have a lot more on the housing element that we need to deal with and specifically from HCD, which is in terms of zoning upgrades, ballot measure reform for Measure K, R2 zoning upgrades. And I would also state that R1 reform is really not reform unless we upgrade those standards as well, development standards. So, you know, I think there's a lot of work to do in those areas and that's kind of the key thing that will move the needle. Because if we don't change the development standards, things aren't going to improve, in my opinion. So I really want to encourage staff and everyone to, you know, really move forward with those other items. You know, and Mr. Martin keeps making the same point, you know, we are required to equitably attribute our housing opportunities across the city. And that doesn't mean we've just done our specific plan for San Pablo Avenue when we're done. You know, that includes Solano Avenue, the Brighton Corridor, that's within, you know, stone's throw, major transit stop and shopping. So there's a lot of opportunity here to make improvements. And I, I hear this commenter in the audience's frustrations with the FAR as an architect, as a builder. I think the FAR, FAR leads to endless frustration and it is a limit on housing, so a barrier to more housing. So I encourage that reform before, actually multiple times, and I would love us to tackle that. So regarding what's before us right now, I just had one suggestion. It was for, what was it, Exhibit D? I think you could add JDU to single-family. It said ADU was allowed, but a JDU is also allowed by right. Wasn't included in Exhibit D. It was A residences, one dwelling, A, single-family. That would be a small suggestion. Otherwise, I'm very happy to support what we're doing right now, but I really wish we would go further, especially in terms of missing middle housing. Support that and, you know, allow people to build duplexes, triplexes, rilexes, what have you. So is, I will conclude and is there a motion?
I'm happy to make a motion to approve this item with staff recommendation.
There a second?
There's a second.
And we'll take a vote. Commissioner Wadi?
Hi.
Commissioner Pilch?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moen?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. That item has been approved. We will move on to Item 7, Presentations. Are there any presentations?
None this evening.
And that leaves Item 8, Adjournment. We are at 8 o'clock, so this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all and thank you.